Good evening, Bellflower. We are reconvening the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council and Bellflower Financing Authority on Monday, January 23rd, 2023 at 7:01 PM. Back to open session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamada? Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Is there a motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Raymond Hamada?
Motion.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilmember Coops to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Tonight's invocation was led by Jared Coops and the pledge allegiance was led by Parks and Recreation Commissioner Mitch Huck. This was held during the outgoing mayor ceremony at the green room on the second floor of this building. Now, for city council announcements, let me start off. The City of Bellflower continues to offer free business training to Bellflower business owners and operators into the new year. Don't miss out on this special opportunity to participate with Thirty Seven Oaks, a commerce development company that helps product entrepreneurs scale and diversify through e-commerce, wholesale, storefronts, and pop-ups. The city has partnered with Thirty Seven Oaks to offer a 10-course certified program that is designed to help support our local product-based merchants. It is an online program, and you can complete the course at your own pace. To qualify for this course, your business must be product-based and located in the city of Bellflower. To apply, apply today at www.37oaks.com/bellflower. For Spanish-speaking Bellflower business owners and residents, the city also continues to work with Asociación Emprendedores to host a pre-eight-week program that will cover how to start, grow, and operate a business. This course will be held in person with sessions every Thursday from April 13, 2023, to June 1st, 2023. For more information, please call Economic Development Department at (562) 804-1424 extension 2010, or visit www.bellflower.org. Councilmember Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. The Fair Housing Foundation will be offering the Bellflower Fair Housing Workshop on Wednesday, January 25th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Bellflower City Hall on our second floor in the green room. The address to the City Hall, the address of City Hall is 16600 Civic Center Drive. This workshop is for the tenants, landlords, managers, and property owners, attorneys, realtors, and management companies. The workshop will cover the new statewide laws, federal and state fair housing laws, eviction processes, rent increases, and a lot more. This workshop is free for all participants. Please call 1-800-446-3247 for more information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stop by the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce office the last Tuesday of the month for easy conversation and breakfast goodies. This networking event serves as a great platform to learn about local small businesses and community projects, get to know chamber members, and enter to win a $50 raffle prize. The next chamber morning mingle is set for Tuesday, January 31st, and will be held from 9:00 till 10:00 in the morning, located at the chamber office at 16730 Bellflower Boulevard, Suite A Like Apple in here in Bellflower. For more information, you can call the chamber number at (562) 867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Farmers Market operates from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM every Monday, except for certain holidays, at the Town Center Plaza. They offer a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, food vendors, and handcrafted specialty items. For more information, please call (562) 804-1424 extension 203, or visit the website at Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Tonight, we have one presentation. This will be, a certificate will be presented to the captain of the Lakewood Station, Captain Don Holgin. So if I can invite my fellow councilmembers to the riser. Well, tonight, I'm very pleased on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Bellflower to make this presentation. It is a proclamation proclaiming this month as the National, this day as the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I'm just going to read the proclamation here. Whereas first observed in 2015, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day is observed across the country to demonstrate support for all members of law enforcement, whereas law enforcement, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, known as LEAD, was observed first this year, was observed this year on Monday, January 9th, 2023. And whereas the day is dedicated to all members of law enforcement, focusing on police and similar state and local agencies, including the dedicated deputies of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. It was started by concerns of police survivors, or cops, which partners with organizations across the country to make the day happen. Now therefore, I, Sunny Santinas, Mayor of City of Bellflower, support the observance of this day and proclaim January 9th, 2023, as National Law Enforcement Day, and encourage all residents to support and respect all law enforcement officers, including the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And as elected officials, our number-one responsibility is public safety, and we're very pleased to partner with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department in ensuring that our city is as safe as possible. So, on behalf of the city, Captain, I'd like to present this proclamation to you, also on behalf of the Los Angeles County Police Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. Let's say a few words.[466.62][466.62](Applause). I'll keep it brief. Thank you very much for this appreciation. Again, it does take a village. We're just a small part. The job we do, we need the support of the City Council. We need the support of the residents, the business owners. So we're just a small part of this, and we thank everybody for assisting. Thank you.[489.91][489.91](Applause).
Thank you. You all do, you all do the work, and it's kind of, it's kind of different to, to have a different kind of conversation, because in the past, there's always been cut, cut, cut. And lately, our question to you is, what else can we do for you to help us? So it's a different kind of conversation that we're having, and we're fortunate to have that kind of conversation. So with your support, I think we can, we can continue to, to keep our city as safe as we can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so at the approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
All right, if you have, if you'd like to speak about a non-agenda item, please come up, sign your name, and state your name for the record.
The Squire of Vietnam Veterans. I want to thank the mayor and the City Council for having the courage to honor our brothers and sisters in blue, for, we have serving in law enforcement across America, military veterans, military reserves, and the National Guard. I have two items I'd like to give to the captain tonight, and first, I will give him the thin blue flag. This is a flag that represents both honor, courage, and sacrifice. This means a lot. This is our American flag that has the blue stripe. The second thing I would like to give the captain is something that me and my graphic designer have created, and it's called Faith, Family, and Freedom. Above faith, in the circle, is four, five branches of the United States Military, and in the inner circle is family, and the background is a heart, and below family is local policing. I would like to now give both of these items to the captain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Squire.[667.13][667.13](Applause).
Hello. Good evening, City Council. My name's, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name's Christopher, and I want to speak on two topics today. The first being a project that my, myself and Mayfair High School's History Club is working on. A few months ago, Mr. Larry Wehage was generous enough to give me a tour of the Carpenter House Museum located at Crowthers Park, and at the end of the meeting, I was blown away by the sheer amount of Bellflower history that was in there, and I thought it would be a shame if our community was deprived of the access to those materials. You know, the museum has been closed for two years now, and there hadn't been many visitors. So I reached out to, to City Manager Jeffrey Stewart, and we had a couple of meetings, and honestly, I am really impressed by what our club has been able to plan in cooperation with, with the city. And so I would like to say that, as of now, there should be, you guys should have received a letter from our History Club requesting approval to partake in a digitization program in which we will take pictures and scan every map, photograph, letter, newspaper clipping that's in the building, and upload it onto a website that'll be hyperlinked to the city's page to give our residents free access to a plethora of local history. So that's something I'm really looking forward to partnering with the city on. The second issue I wanted to talk about while I have the time is, before I was a student member of the Bellflower Board of Education, I was a staff member at John S., at John S. Sims Park. And one of the issues that staff always talked about there was the lack of surveillance on the park. There are no outdoor cameras that are functioning on the basketball courts, or on the fields, or in the playground, and it was, it always became a security issue for us. Whenever the sun went down, obviously, staff didn't feel comfortable going out to do supervision, and so the general public would be pretty unguarded out there. And then a few, about a month ago, there was an incident in which someone was detained at gunpoint by law enforcement on the field. My friend, who's a senior at Bellflower High School, Vivian Diaz, was working that day, and that was terrifying for her. And I can't imagine, you know, how that would have been if I was still a staff member there. And so I know you guys are gonna go, or look at your budget in the spring coming up and decide whether or not to allocate funding towards improving surveillance on our parks, but I would urge you guys to, to invest in, in outdoor cameras at Sims Park and all of our other parks, because it, it secures the safety of our residents, who are just parkgoers, and of our, of our park staff, who a lot of the times are students, the students I represent on the school board. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.[861.32][861.32](Applause). Let me just kind of, Mr. Stewart, we met with Mr. Mendoza a while back, and then I received his letter last week before I went on trip, so I think I emailed you that we're gonna circle back this week, so.
Yeah, it'll be, we'll, we'll meet about that, then it'll be on the next agenda.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing also regarding security cameras, we are all very proactive in that. For example, let's say we're looking at security cameras on the Constitution Park, and as you know, or may not know now, by now, Sims Park will be basically renovated. We will have the water recapture project underneath the, the field, and that field's gonna be redone, and we're also constructing a youth and senior center and other improvements at Sims Park. So surveillance is gonna be one of those things that will be installed. So, so I want to make sure that you know that, and it's on top of our agenda, so to speak, to make sure that it is safe. Thank you. Next.
Hi, good evening to everyone. My name is.
Picking the sign in for the record, please.
Okay. There you go. So, good evening. My name is Victoria Ocampo. I have been living in Bellflower now for five years, off of Park and Ardmore, which is a very, very busy street. It is concerning public safety, because that street only has a stop sign right after a light, and on that street, we have a lot of street takeovers, and nearby too, by the Lakewood area, we have a lot of street takeovers by cars being raced. And when, I do have a couple neighbors with me here tonight, and when one, when we do call the officers, they have on our recording line, the thing, they respond to us by saying that there's too many of them, there's nothing that we can do about it. And the stop signs are not being respected. We have children in the neighborhood. We have groups of teenagers in the neighborhood that are always out and about, people walking their dog, people walking, the stop signs are not respected. This is constantly happening. We are all literally scared, especially for us that live in a corner house. There, I myself am right off the corner of Park and Ardmore, and it is, it has come to extreme measures just to feel safe in my own home, and constant cars being hit on that particular street, and nothing is being done. I know that it would be a lot in the budget to enforce dips throughout the street, but off of Bellflower and Park, anything over to the left side of Bellflower, because that's a nicer neighborhood, they have dips from Bellflower all the way till Woodruff. Literally, they have dips. They have, the stop signs there are respected more, and it's like anywhere from Bellflower to the right going on to Clark, it's ghetto. It's coming to be ghetto, like my neighbor literally states, and I quote her, is this what it has come to? Is this what Bellflower is becoming? It's a joke. It's literally just on Saturday, we saw an officer, a sheriff, parked there for like a couple hours, and the cars were respecting just because he was there parked. If it wasn't because of him, that Saturday probably would have been horrible. So I feel like we do need to have more security, because there's just a lot going on in the street, tagging, cars being hit. Like, I've gone to extreme measures to protect my home, and Bellflower is trying to fine me for things that I've done at my home, to protect my home. It's ridiculous, it's a joke. So we, we really want to speak up, and we want to be heard, and I do have a couple of neighbors with me here tonight. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Ed Coranza. I'm on the 9600 block of Park Street. I live on the east side of the street, and it's the same concern for us. It's, you know, I got grandkids that can't come to the front of the yard, because literally the Park Street is kind of like a raceway. You know, they, they just go up and down and have no respect for, for nobody there on that block. And, and I think one of the issues is because, you know, that street runs from Woodruff all the way to Downey, so they use that as a, like, intersection. So we've been talking to Councilman Sanchez, and, you know, looking at, to see what we can do to better that street, you know? We talked about doing maybe a little runabout, or something that can kind of slow the traffic down a little bit, or do something, because it's just, every day is a different battle on that street, you know? And it's, 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 my grandkids can't even come to the front yard, because it's just up and down, up and down. And, you know, we, like, my neighbor has concerns too, her big fence that she built, that's something that I want to do as well, because, you know, to protect my property and protect my grandkids and stuff like that, so. You know, we've been working a lot with, with Councilman Sanchez to see what we can do to, to either do the dips or, or do something else that can help us and protect the, the whole street, you know? So I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
In fact, I've worked in Bellflower at Dr. Krailene's office, as I know a couple of members here, and we're patients, but I live on the, not on the corner of Bellflower and Ardmore, or Park and Ardmore, but I have seen things that totally unacceptable. I'm getting older, and I hate being one of those people that has to call the police 24/7, but I will be taking notes, and I will be calling you guys, because I've seen them run two cars abreast down Park Street. People say, well, you've got a stop sign. Oh, they don't stop it. Stop, stop sign? What's that? You know, they run right through the stop sign, and they're, they are literally racing side by side. Now, you know, we've got, I've, I've lost a couple of pets to that street, and, you know, and I've seen one child got hit on that street. So there's got to be something done, you know? Like she said, dips, or even the turnabout, that would be great, something to slow these people down. These kids are out of control. I know there was a takeover on Lakewood and Artesia a couple of weeks ago, because I called the police, I could hear them, I could hear the kids, you know? And then they were running up and down our street after they finished the takeover. And I watched the kid across the street, and I pay attention to him, because when he leaves, something's gonna happen, I know, you know? So it's something to think about. We've, we need help. We just need help. We appreciate anything you guys could do. And just think of the old times, Dr. Krailene's office. Okay? Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else who would like to speak on the same issue? On the same issue, ma'am?
No.
Okay, let me just respond before you speak. Joel, our Director of Public Safety, we're gonna be looking into that, and we are very fortunate tonight, because the captain is here, personally speaking. He's the captain of the Lakewood Station, so he heard your concerns, so we hear you, so we will look into it and then get back to you, okay? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a little bit of background information. At the request of Ms. Ocampo, who, there was a requested meeting set for her to meet with me, like we all do, we all meet with our constituents, and so we met with her on Thursday. When I say we, me, myself, and Planning Director Elizabeth Oba.[1431.11][1431.11](Laughter) You know, she just changed her name. And we were met with, with her neighbors, her residents, who we met for the first time on Thursday, and these were the same concerns that were brought up to my attention at that time, first time of hearing them by the residents specifically. We did speak for about an hour or so, and, and there was mention of possibly solutions coming at a later date, such as like a roundabout or other items, but we definitely took note of the concern, and that's why I'm sure our public safety team put an officer there for the weekend, but I just wanted you to know how.
Was public safety part of the meeting?
Negative, because we weren't expecting that conversation.
Okay, okay.
It was another item related to the individual, one individual, and all of a sudden, exactly.
To public safety, because I think the concern is more public safety than planning at this point.
Right. What drew, what drew us out there was another related item, unrelated item. Just want to provide a little bit of background information.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to provide some insight.
You're welcome. All right, next.
I'm Darlene Plasios. Thank you for all you're doing for our city. Seriously, mayor and councilmembers, I do appreciate it. The tree lighting ceremony, I forgot to thank you, that was a wonderful event. Crossing, the change of the crosswalk is supposed to happen on the first, so if there's anything delaying that, please let me know. I hope their community doesn't end up like our community. Add on my corner. Thing I'd just like to talk about is, there was money given for the homeless, $500,000, I think, from Janice Hahn, and I'm just wondering what's gonna happen with that money?
After the comment.
I can't remember what the third issue I was gonna talk about was, but do we know what's gonna happen with that money?
I'll respond to you after your three minutes.
Okay. Oh, I'm done.
Okay.
But the crosswalk is gonna happen on the corner, correct? How about the flashing lights? Are they gonna happen? Yes or no?
This is, this is public comments, ma'am. So state your comments, and then I will respond after you.
Okay.
I don't want to take up any of your time.
No, okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. The first, Mr. Gureki, are you ready to respond to the question about the update on the crosswalk?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, as I've talked and told Darlene previously, the sidewalk will be switched around to the north side. That is tentatively scheduled for the week of February 1st, unless we're seeing any kind of rain or anything. I have no reason to believe it would not happen that week, and so if we can get it done a little earlier, we will try to do that, we'll work with the work schedule. And that's the extent of the work that we're doing there. We, council may give me direction at some point in time to look down the line at flashing beacons or something to that effect, but we haven't gotten to that point yet or anything. So we'll just handle the, the crosswalk painting, as we've discussed with her in the past, and move on from there.
So just to clarify, the target date is February 1st?
Yeah, we had to post a notice, because we're, you know, legally, you have to post a notice, because we're moving it, so we put on the notice, February 1st. It's my guy's work order system, they'll, they'll try to do it in the first, it may be the 29th, it may be February 2nd, it'll be done right around that time.
Okay. Around that time, okay.
Yeah.
That's fair enough. All right, thank you. And the second question from Mr. Plasios is, I'm gonna respond regarding the $500,000 from Supervisor Janice Hahn. The city spends about $2.2 million to operate the New Hope Shelter, so that, that funding was requested from the supervisor to help fund for the operation of the shelter. So in response to your question, that $500,000 will be basically subtracted from the $2.2 million that we spend out of our general funds, coming from, to be spent, to be invested, so to speak, to the homeless shelter. Okay? Yes, it is. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. We are moving along. Next item on the agenda is item, oh, wait here. Item 9A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a public hearing. It's considered as possible action, you conduct a public hearing to consider an application from Samir Hajazi of Archistants to approve a development review, a tentative map, zone change, and a site design review, adopt resolution number 23-03, a resolution approving development review case number DR-5-22-13065, to allow construction of eight two-story, single-story residences with attached garages. Tentative map number 83812, to allow subdivision of a 41,174 square foot lot into eight lots, and site design review case SDR-22-01, to allow flexibility of the development standards on property located at 10343-10351 Mapledale Street, and 3, read by title only, wait for the reading, and an injuries ordinance number 140-
And three, read by title only, way further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1423, an ordinance approving the zone change from R1 to R1PD to, on property located at 10343-10351 Mapledale Street, and attending zoning map. And for the staff report, we have Mr. Clark and Ms. Oba will make the presentation.
All right, who's gonna make the presentation? Mr. Clark, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members, good evening, staff, good evening, public. The subject site is located on the north side of Mapledale Street. It is bounded by McNabb Avenue to the east. The closest west, the closest street to the west is Woodruff Avenue. And the closest street to the north is Rosecrans Avenue. The request, as the city manager said, includes DR case number 5-22-13065 for development review, TT 83812 for tentative track map, ZZ 2202 for zone change, and SDR 22-02 for site design review. The proposed site includes the subdivision of eight lots and to propose eight single-family homes, two-story in height with attached garages. The site proposes a total of 30 parking spaces, has a 20-foot wide driveway approved by the fire department, and has landscape throughout. The site, each, I guess each unit, each lot has setbacks of a 15-foot rear yard setback, five-yard foot setbacks, and the driveway in the middle serves as a front yard for the units. The proposed plan for lots 1 and 2, the first floor and second floor includes two bedrooms. The floor plan for lots 3 to 6 includes three bedrooms. And the floor plan for lots 7 and 8 also includes three bedrooms. On December 5, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended City Council approve the project with the following two modified conditions and to add one new condition. The first one is condition number 20, which is in your staff report. As a trash service, the commission wanted to make sure that the trash service was conducted on-site and not on the street. Condition 33, in regards to future additions, the commission wanted to make sure that this condition was included in the CCNRs. And the new condition was that the applicant, which is condition 43, is that the applicant must install and maintain mature landscaping throughout the subject property as depicted on the property's fly-through, which I will show after this presentation. In reviewing the project, the project complies with development review findings, tentative track map findings, zone change findings, and site design review findings pursuant to resolution number PC 23-03. It is recommended that City Council open the public hearing, take testimony and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number 23-03 and read by title only, way further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1423, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my presentation. I will show the City Council staff and public a fly-through of the project and then the applicant, and I believe the property owner is in the audience for questions. Thank you.
Yeah, see what technology can do, huh?
Yes.
It's quite impressive. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any question of Mr. Clark?
I have a question.
Councilmember Coops.
Mr. Clark, I'm looking in the report, how is the trash gonna be handled in terms of individual or bin, or I look, after seeing the production there, wondering how that would go?
So, it will be individual bins?
So, each residence will have a three?
Four, actually.
Four?
Yeah, so, for unit 1, which is here, they'll be on the sides in between each unit. Trash, trash, they'll be stored outside on, in between each unit.
Put back up the video, because I was looking to see how much separation there is between the lots to accommodate. All right, can you get a little closer as the video progresses? So, the separation you see behind the car there, is that two gates? One for one property and one for the other, and that's where the trash cans would be?
Correct.
Okay, and there, it looks pretty concise there, and there's enough room to accommodate the regular-sized bins?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
They used to have about five feet in between.
Okay, how many, so I noticed we have a lighting development here with the different light fixtures that are on the homes and they're being augmented by the individual street lamps like exhibited there? How many of those will there be? To illuminate the common area?
I'm gonna show the council and the public their lighting plan. Sorry, four, sorry, I was just gonna show you the lighting plan.
And all of the, it appears in the renderings here that every building is the exact same color? There's no deviation in color?
Correct.
But they're still individual homes?
Correct, still individual homes.
Is there a homeowners association?
It is conditioned to have a homeowners association.
And so, the homeowners association would have responsibility for the exterior colors? Or is that an individual product?
All right, that's up to the developer for the colors.
All right, that's all the questions I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Coops, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation, first of all. A couple of questions. I just wanna, for clarification regarding the trash bins, you stated that there was an amendment to, to the project, meaning that they would do pickup on-site, right, not on-street?
Correct, on the property.
So, they're actually gonna, the trash hauler's gonna come on to their private property and pick up and exit?
That is the ideal.
And they have sufficient enough space?
Yes, we do believe so. And that's something that the applicant would have to work out with the trash provider as far as on-site pickup.
Okay. Interesting, all right, sounds, well, if a fire truck can, okay.
Correct.
Perfect, all right. And then, oh, this is for the applicant. Were there any concerns by the Planning Commission that, that were brought to your attention?
Yes.
That may not have been addressed or that were addressed?
So, the issues that, oops, sorry. Issues that came up was the trash, the trash issue. And making sure that future additions, that was included in the CCNRs and then the additional trash, additional landscaping condition for mature, mature landscaping.
Okay.
There was something that also came up at the meeting regarding, I think, construction hours. But that was already in the conditions of approval.
That's in the conditions normally, right? Mitigating the external externalities during.
Right, the noise, the hours, and things like that.
Okay, perfect. Then my next question will be for the applicant, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Dunton.
Thank you. Okay, I got a trash question also. So, put up where the, the street, I guess the street where the parking, parallel parking is.
You want the site plan or the fly-through?
Site plan, yeah, or the fly-through, it doesn't matter, they both, both work. So, I, you said four barrels, is that for future? Because right now, there's only three-barrel system that we have.
Currently, it's four, I can't.
For new construction, or?
I can't, for five units or more, I believe it's four, I can, that's the public.
So, you have an organic, you have a dedicated organic barrel in on five units or more, okay?
Correct.
All right. Which is fine, anyway, where are we gonna put them here?
So.
Thirty-two barrels, I mean, I'm just saying, where are we gonna put them? There's a driveway we can't, I mean, is it, there's a curb there, would they go next to the curb? Because you got parking spaces.
It could be along the driveway or any open space along the driveway.
In the dri, oh, you back out of the garage and bang. I'm just saying it's tight. I'm concerned where they're gonna go, you know, I guess, I mean, I'm guessing with the grass and the curbs here.
They could pull them out maybe in the drive, in the.
That's a lot of barrels.
So, in these driveways, so these are the driveways for each resident?
So, you just leave them in the barrel, leave, leave the barrels in the driveway?
Right, and then once they, they're picked up, then put, then put them back. It's kinda similar to, to when you put them on the street.
On the street.
Similar concept, when you put them on the street, leave them out there and then you, once they pick them up, then you take them back in. But in this case, it's a private driveway, so you just put it along the apron there and then once they pick it up, then you just put it back in the yard.
Doesn't sound very convenient if you, you get out, you park a car in the street, you put your things, then you go to work, put the cans out there, go to work. I mean, it's, I'm just saying, it's real-life scenarios. It's tight. Anyway, I asked Planning, you know, so they prepared. My concern is these parking spaces here, obviously, you have three parking spaces and they're designated parking spaces now with the CCNRs, I'm guessing. I guess if you bought these two houses, you would understand that, you know, your parking space is not here. I'm looking on mine, because I can't read that one, as far as. Or seven, you got, that's number seven.
Number two.
Is that, no, that's number seven.
Number two.
That's two, okay. That's two is there, this is three, right?
No, three is up here.
What number is this one?
Four.
Four, okay, and then we have unit eight right here?
Correct.
And we have unit six in the middle right here. I just think, I, I get it that there, this place is overparked, I mean, it's a good thing. But I mean, the placement, I'm concerned about, you know, the parking to be a little more even, I, I, this is a hammerhead turnaround, I'm guessing, at the end?
Correct.
Other than that, and I guess, you know, imagine eight will be parked in there. This is how the, how the homeowners association, when it takes over, what's gonna be left? Those are my concerns, I just, I can, you know, talk to the applicant with them, I just wanted to bring them up. And then back to the three, the parking spaces that are in front of a house, I asked Elizabeth to, if we've done that before in planned developments? And you wanna give me your report?
Sure, Councilmember Dunton. So, we did some research on our past PD projects, there have been a variety of layouts for site designs. We've seen parallel parking, perpendicular parking, so you'll see, you know, parking spaces in the side yard as opposed to parallel to the street. There's all kinds of different configurations. The main point with all of those is that each of those spaces were designated as guest spaces, which were required to be put in the CCNRs as open space. So, they weren't specifically designated to a specific unit, it was meant to be shared as common open space between all of those eight units. There have been past projects where there have been parking, you know, guest parking stacked all the way in the back, which in some cases burdens the units that are all the way in the back. And then we've seen it where they're kind of spread out evenly. And then we've seen it where they for sure are spread out evenly so that, you know, one parking space is adjacent to each home. So, we've seen a lot of reiterations, I can't tell you, there, there is a specific go-to pattern that, that has been used, but we've seen all kinds of various layouts.
Various layouts, but have we seen a sign parking such as this one?
I don't believe this is a sign parking.
Oh, it's not a sign parking, I'm putting the numbers together.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's not a sign.
It's not a sign, this is guest parking then.
Right, he's just counting out the number of.
It's just coincidental that the numbers line up, like two is by two and four is by four.
Right. Right, so, so.
It's just coincidental then.
Correct, once it's developed, they'll have individual signs put up saying visitor, but they won't be specific to each unit, they'll be for first come, first served.
Got it.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Dunton. I guess we have the same topics for questions here. Just following up on the parking, because my, my concern there is in, for practical purposes, if I own this property here, most likely my guests will not, will not find any parking space. Because most likely, the owners of these properties here will park one of their vehicles here. I mean, it's just reality, because out of convenience, especially if you have, especially since you have tandem parking here, okay? So, i-if, let's say, husband and wife are working odd hours, it's gonna be difficult to arrange for parking and tandem. So, out of convenience, one of the couples will be parking their, their car vehicles here, so it's easier to get in and out. And so, again, in reality, the, the owners of these two properties will not have a guest parking anymore. Because once the cars are parked here, it's gonna be very, unless, unless the HOA will be very diligent in enforcing those CCNR. That's gonna be, that's gonna be an issue, I think, okay? The other question I have is on this, will they be designated as a par lane, fire lane?
Correct, it is.
Mark, par lane?
Correct.
So, no parking?
Correct.
At all?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and also, what's the? and also, wha- what's the, um, uh, let me see here. One of the floor, one of, uh, Elizabeth, I called you about the, um, the site plans. There's a chain link fence still, on the north end?
Yes, so, I, I did review those plans, um, with Jason, and the chain link fence is actually on the school property. So it's on the adjacent property. There is plans that are showing, um, a new six-foot-high CMU wall on the subject property, um, as a perimeter wall.
So the, the indication that the chain link fence will not be removed is inaccurate, then?
Just correct.
It will remain.
It will remain.
It will remain?
Yes.
Right, um, and again, that's on the school side.
On the school side? So the, um, so the block wall will be inside the property line?
Correct.
Correct.
Just abating the chain link fence?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Uh, because one of the conditions is, it's gonna be black wall?
Correct.
Uh, along the perimeter of the property?
Correct. Decorative, with a cap on top, yes.
Okay, alright, very good. Alright, any other question from staff?
Mr. Mayor, actually, one more question for staff. Can you, uh, for, just kinda, uh, refresh my mi, my memory here, um, with regards to the private, the right-of-way of the private apron in the street, or the, the driveway? Does our CRNR, that the, you will be reviewing the applicant's CRNR at the end of the day, and, and, uh, making sure that the HOA will be responsible for the repairs of that private driveway? The only reason I bring that up is because we've had, we have several, um, across the city that are old, and, and, you know, have torn apart, and we get residential's complaints, resident complaints from those? Is that in here? Can you guide me to the section?
You're talking about repair?
Yeah, to repairs and maintenance, making sure the HOA is responsible for that?
Uh, so, twenty-six, on page nineteen. Uh, CCNRs must be in conformance with all requirements pursuant to the BMC and address maintenance by all unit owners of all common areas of the property, including the driveway and perimeter walls. What the director and I were talking about is, you know, maybe, that could be revised to include lighting as well. Uh, but it does include the driveway.
Okay. That's good to know, that's good. Yeah, wouldn't it be opposed to including lighting? And, and the, and the parking stalls, right?
Correct.
Lighting and parking.
And landscaping, yeah.
And, and landscaping, okay. I've come across many HOAs that don't cover, and then, it's a problem. So, lighting, parking, and gardening, or garden, landscape? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, you're welcome. One more question, what is covered in the considered common area?
Uh, so, maybe, refer just to car. So, in, in this design, uh, common area, and I'll, I'll get the applicant to clarify for me as well. Sorry, common area. So, where the parking space is, landscape, this area along the driveway, so that would be common area.
Uh, you mean, anything in front of the house is common area?
The sidewalk, or?
How about this, is this common area here? Or after the driveway?
Oh, this area here.
Oh, including the driveway?
Right, correct. I believe so, that's why I asked the applicant to clarify for me.
Okay, let's clarify it with, and also, I saw in the, uh, one of the, um, layout, there's a, there's a lamp, lamp post towards the back, is it here?
Correct.
So are those the only two locations where there's a lamp post?
No, I believe there's four, uh, Mayor. So, there's a lamp post here, there's a lamp post here, there's a lamp post here, and there's a lamp post here.
Ah, okay, okay. So they're kind of distributed, alright.
Correct.
Okay, good. And then, um, wha- what is the side yard setback between properties?
Uh, five feet on, uh.
From the common wall?
From the common wall, and then, in the back, it's fifteen.
Okay, alright. Five feet, alright. Okay, very good, any other question?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Is, is there a, uh, a house or an HOA electric meter? For the common lights?
Uh, there is one that I'm aware of, but then they, they can definitely establish it.
And that, also, since we have irrigation in the common area, I just wanna know if there's a water meter, okay? I'll ask the applicant, thank you.
Alright, very good, so now, we invite the applicant.
Mayor, do you wanna, um, open the public hearing?
Oh, that's right, that's right. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Move, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dunton, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to open a public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Good evening, sir. Please state your name.
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, uh, City Council, City Staff, and City of Belle Flower, uh, in attendance. Uh, my name is Samir Hijazi, I am the applicant, uh, on behalf of Arcusans. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, I think, Jason's done a good.
You've heard about the questions from the council, it seems like we're kind of in the same, the same subject matters this week.
Right, right, yeah, it's, it's revolting about common area, basically.
Why don't you just address the common area first?
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, common area includes, so, common, common area is going to include everything, in- including the sidewalk on the driveway, and all the landscaping in front of it, including the driveway itself, and all the aprons that lead into the, into the unit. And it also includes the lighting, uh, onsite, the, obviously, the hammerhead, which is part of the, uh, common area. It also, uh, is going to include the, uh, the parking, uh, the, these are guest parking, and they're not assigned. Another, uh, clarification. Uh, also, it will include, include, uh, on this side, uh, the, uh, the front, uh, the front landscaping, uh, facing Mapledale Street, as we believe this is, uh, in the interest of the community. And that's generally what it is.
And then, will there be, question is, will there be a separate electric meter and water meter for the common area?
Uh, definitely, there will have to be, because, uh, it is on its, yeah, it will have its own, uh, meter, uh, for the lighting.
Okay.
And, uh, obviously, it will be irrigated, and the irrigation's also a part of the landscaping in the common area, that, that's normal. Uh, the maintenance of the driveway itself, uh, is also gonna be included. Basically, the homeowner is behind the, uh, behind the sidewalk, and in.
And what is your estimated homeowners' association fee?
It's really difficult to, uh, you know, to tell you right now, because this is still in the works.
Okay.
But I think it, it will be, uh, definitely below a hundred bucks.
Okay, alright. And then, the other question we have is on the trash?
Yes.
Collection?
So, we thought about this, just in the same, uh, manner that you're thinking about it. And we have seen many, uh, uh, possible, uh, similar scenarios, uh, in, in other communities. So one of them is what you guys discussed, which is basically, the homeowner, uh, will place, uh, on the, on the curb, or, and in the driveways, as they're responsible for their trash, and responsible for their access to their home, so they're not infringing. Uh, another option would be to actually, on trash day, as these are actually guest parking, they're not resident parking, the parking area can be, the, a sign can be posted, where all the cans can be put in for the park, so no parking on trash day.
Okay.
And that's, that's very common, I mean, we, we've seen, we've seen that, uh, in ma, in, in many projects, and we, we've implemented it before.
So, if I may ask, sir, how many developments have you done similar to this?
So, I am the architect, I'm not the, I'm not the developer, but I, I've, I've done five or six projects for this developer.
Okay, because I was wondering about the homeowners' association, how they actually work out, because it seems like they, they need to have a very strong homeowners' association in this case.
Definitely, but, you know, the, the, the good thing about this, first of all, in my opinion, parking is premium when, when it comes to, uh, residential developments. The reason why, uh, you cannot have enough of it, is just the nature, you know, we, we're, we're in automobile society. We, we appreciate, we like cars, we get more than one, and we worship them almost, you know. We wash perfectly clean cars in, in, in this part of the state.
And then, when your kids move in with you, with the cars, you got more.
So, uh, so parking is really of the utmost importance, and that's why we're overparked on this project. We didn't have to provide so many, but we believe it, it's, it's, it's in the best interest of the community overall. And it will eliminate a lot of the issues that I heard about earlier today, you know, regarding, you know, cars going up and down, because this is, this is a cozy community, you know? And I think by the nature of its size, this will be a very close-knit community that will, uh, will, will, will be respectful of, of their ownership, their neighbors, and the property. We're, we're very, uh, uh, confident that it will be.
Well, I'm glad that you, you kind of overpark in this kind of development, because, uh, as I drive around here, I see a lot of dri, um, garages.
Yes.
Uh, that are not being used for cars. Storage. So they park their cars on the driveway, and the garage uses storage.
No, you know, you're absolutely correct, I mean, not just here, but it's, you know, it happens in many, many, many cities and communities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, and, uh, what other question we have here, um, I think, um, any other question of the applicant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first question, uh, Mr. Samir, uh, was related to, would you be opposing, opposed to us? And thank you for, by the way, explaining to us what your common areas are gonna be, but would you be opposed to us kind of, um, actually, uh, detailing that in the plans, or in the, uh, in, in the resolution?
Not opposed to it, although, uh, I believe there is a, uh, a part of the conditions, is that the CCNRs, uh, need to be, need to be reviewed and, and approved by, by city, anyway, so.
Would that be sufficient, then, Miss Cor, Miss Beth?
Yes, prior to, um, prior to occupancy, they're required, or actually, prior to permit issuance, they're required to submit a draft CCNRs for the staff's review, to make sure that everything that's conditioned is included. And then, also, the city attorney reviews, reviews it, before it gets recorded as part of the project.
Very good, so do you need me to, do you need us to ask for lighting and parking and landscaping to be included in here? And the meter, or do you have that?
If you wanna be specific, you can, um, if not, we'll make sure that we catch it during the review period.
I'll leave it at that, then, that'll be fine, that'll be sufficient, with me, assuming my colleagues agree with that. Um, and then, uh, Mr. Samir, the one thing, I kinda heard a number on your HOA, you, you said, was it a hundred?
Don't quote me on the number, that's not my spirit here, but I think, I think it should be low enough, because it only deals with, uh, very limited, uh, uh, components of the site.
Just please.
A typical, a typical, a typical homeowner association, you know, is under a hundred dollars, I mean, that's what, that's, that's what I think.
I would just urge you to double-check, have your applicant double-check the numbers, and ensure that they have sufficient funding to, when it comes to doing the, the street pavement.
Absolutely, that's required by the state.
Correct.
The Department of Real Estate requires that you're, you know, you're, you're correct, you're funded, and, uh, potential buyers have to agree to it, and, uh.
Okay, very good.
And sign up.
I just hope, hope you, you know, just double-check those numbers first, thank you. Uh, and then, lastly, what's your expected timeline?
So, uh, if, if, if we're successful tonight, uh, we'll, uh, there is a, uh, I think there is a, there is a, a period uh, between now, for, for, you know, to get vested, in other words, in a decision? Is there an appeal period?
So, so they do have to also, uh, come back and final the track map as well, as part of the process.
So, we, if we're successful tonight, and then, we're, you know, hopefully, we are, uh, we'll go to work right away. Uh, within probably, uh, four months, uh, they'll be, they'll be reviewing the construction documents, and, uh, the permitting process.
Very good, thank you for sharing, thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Coops?
Yes. So the question is, now, you, this is not a gated community, correct?
This is not a gated community, no.
So, will you provide for a sweep, like, I live on a private street, not unlike what you presented. We pay an additional fee each month to have a sweeper come in, to take care of the common driveway. Do you partici, do you anticipate that that could be the case with yours, or do you think everyone's gonna take ownership of that driveway, of their portion?
I will let the developer owner answer that question.
One of the things that's in our CCNRs, when we talk about parking, we've conditioned that you must have two open parking spaces in each garage, uh, to be in conformity. Now, I'm not telling it everybody does that, but that is what we have laid out, so that we try to minimize on-street parking and driveway take-up, but you might consider that in your CCNRs, that that is part of what they're signing up for?
In my own community, where I live,
Uh-huh.
we are required to park all the, all the cars in the garages. The only time we can park outside is when we're completely full on, on the inside. So we, we, we have similar, and that's, and that would be okay to, uh, to include in the CCNRs. I think it's a, it's, it's, it's a good practice, and it allows for enforcement.
And then, as Mr. Dunton indicated, when your kids come back from college and have a car, you know, where are they meant to go? You know, that's always the next part of the process.
That's my dilemma in my house.
Right, well, we're preaching to the choir here, right?
That's right.
Are the floor plans, and I can't tell them, I looked at the plans, it looks to me like you have consistency on the first floor, and then deviation on the second floor?
Uh, similarity on the first floor, and, uh, significant diff, you know, on the second floor, yeah.
So, would this, homeowners be responsible for the perimeter walls? That's their responsibility throughout the project?
Uh, yes, any, anything behind, uh, behind the sidewalk would be the individual homeowner responsibility, in this case.
Just as an example, my community has twelve homes, not unlike what yours are. I pay a hundred dollars a month for landscaping, over a hundred dollars a month for electricity. Hell, the, we have to have liability insurance on the common areas, that's about three hundred dollars a month. So you can see how quickly, I'm just giving you three easy ones, and then, we still have to put some money aside for reserves for the fencing, for the common areas.
Yeah.
And, uh, I can't get by on two hundred a month, I'm going backwards, on twelve homes. So, just, when you said a hundred dollars a month, we all perked up like, whoa, you know?
But, do you live in a single-family home, or a, uh?
A single-family home.
Single-family home.
There's twelve on the street, they're about three thousand square foot each. But, we run, whenever we put up a project like this, the parking and the trash are always the predominant concerns.
Right.
And once you've sold it to someone, everything is cool when the first guy moves in, but by the eighth one gets there, it's like, you gotta love your neighbor as yourself, I mean, it becomes biblical, because there could be some real concerns, you know?
Yeah.
You've made all the uni, the exterior colors the same, is there a reason for that? I would think that people would wanna have a little bit of individuality on that.
I, uh, well, well, the reason why is, uh, I, in my opinion, conformity is a, is a good thing when you have an HOA. The minute you have different colors, other, you know, homeowners are gonna come and say, I wanna paint my mine green today. You know, or, that's what I want. You know, or that's what I want, or, or yellow. But if you stay within the same palette, and there is, although the, the paint is, is the same, but the finishes, the other finishes are different. The stones are, for example, are different. Uh, and the, obviously, the, the massing is different. So although same color, it's really for, for conformity to help, um, enforce, uh, you know, di, you know, different tastes. So, if we like this, we buy into it, that's what it is.
And all the roofs are the same color as indicated in the plans, and all the windows and doors are the same throughout the project, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, they all have central heat and air.
That's correct.
Now, do you have solar provisions for this?
Uh, that's required by code. Yes, you have to have it.
So that, every unit will have its own solar system?
Every unit will, will, will have, will have the infrastructure to put the solar system. That's, that's part of the California building, uh, California green code.
So even, so you've roughed in for the solar system, but it need not necessarily be?
You do not install it. Yeah, the homeowner on his own can, uh, can buy into that. But it's not like starting from zero.
All right. Now, do you have, uh, you know, many times these homes are like buying a car. You got the strip model, and then you go to the design center and add all the fun stuff. And then suddenly your seven hundred thousand dollar home becomes a nine hundred thousand dollar home.
I've seen that.
You have the same program here where when you buy, you can add on certain things, or you're gonna have it all finished and it's turnkey whenever the potential buyer comes along?
I, I, I think to, uh, to, to, to be, to be fair to the market and to, uh, to homebuyers, you have to allow a certain amount of, uh, flexibility on the, on the finishes on the inside. On the outside, there is, there is nothing. There is nothing that you can, uh, change. But, you know, somebody that wants, uh, you know, hardwood floor versus ceramic tile versus carpet, that would be probably something that we, uh, or the developer would, uh, would, would negotiate with the homebuyer.
Could you, if you had one chimney, can you add a second?
No.
Here's that one, Bob. Right. Bob's got two chimneys.
I don't think you can put chimneys in anymore.
Stay law. But, um, I like the project. I like the concept. I like where it's located. And I'm always aware of the fact that the state of California is encouraging us to have more usable buildings. I mean, we gotta be attentive to that too. But it looks to me like a, a quality project in my estimation then. We're all planning commissioners at one point, and so we're out here kinda picking fly specks out of pepper because that's how we were trained. So, that's all the questions I have.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Dunton?
Oh, the house is gonna be wired for electric vehicles in the garage or outside?
Uh, s, no, it would be inside. You can, uh, not outside. There, there will be, there will be provision for it to, uh, in the garage.
In the garage.
And that's again, part of the state law. I mean, that, that's a requirement, not, not a, not a, not an option.
But the court, but the court can go out to the, what I was getting at. The court comes out of the garage and for the.
Right, it'll be ins, inside the, inside the garage.
And when you were talking about your situation, about you have to park in the garage, that's a city ordinance, right?
Correct, it's, uh,
Bellflower doesn't have that city ordinance.
But it's also in the HOA.
But I would like to have them as, as conditioned to park cars in the garage.
Councilmember Dunton, we, we do have that condition, um, that the garages must be used exclusively for the parking of the residence vehicle. And that's, um, condition number twenty-four.
And, I, I too didn't believe a hundred, a hundred dollars for HOA fees. Broken sprinkler hadn't got you that.
Well, we had a project that was twenty-four units. What, what, what was the, uh?
Anyway.
Okay.
That, um, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um, so I only have one, one question to follow up regarding the, the, the paint color.
Yes.
So once the owner purchased the property, they can repaint?
They, they can, they can re, they can, they can repaint.
Okay.
But they're, the, the, the way the, uh, CCNRs will read is that they need to go to the association for, uh, the, design committee approval, just like all associations.
So the HOA will decide on the color palette or?
Later on, if the association decides that they wanna change the colors, that's, but that's, that's the entire association.
So nothing is described in the beginning. It's after the end?
Not in the beginning.
Not in the beginning, okay, yeah. All right, very good. I think that's all we have for you, and we'd like to hear from the developer.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
If you can just sign in and then state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Mohamed Azam. I'm a developer and I own a couple of properties in, say, the Bellflower and Downey.
And how many, uh, similar developments have you done so far, similar to this?
About twelve, thirteen.
Okay, uh, do they have HOAs?
Yeah, some do, some don't.
Okay, can you tell us your experience about having an HOA? How did they get along after, a year after the properties have been sold?
Actually, I haven't heard any bad news. It's all good news because mainly the association is made up of certain tenants. They vote among each other, and they vote for like three or four members, and they run the project or the development as they want.
Hmm, okay. Question to staff, is the developer required to be part of the homeowners association within so many months or?
For, for a year.
For a year, okay.
Condition twenty-six, yeah.
So you're part of the associa, homeowners association?
As a matter of fact, I just finished twenty-four houses in Downey of Firestone and Sword Gray, and, um, I just left the association a couple of months ago, but so far, smooth sailing, not an issue.
And how many units was that, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Similar concept here, there's a common driveway?
Uh, common driveway, same thing, five space setback, setback between the properties. And they have no issue with trash cans. They have no issues with parking, even though in, uh, Downey, we have half a space for each unit. And this is one space per unit. And this one have a lot of three-car garages. That one have only two-car garages. And the driveway painted red, nobody can park on the side, and we have twelve parking spaces for twenty-four units. I drive there sometimes and I see a lot of parking still empty.
So how do they care of, take care of their trash, their trash barrels?
Uh, same thing, front of the house, in front of the garage, on a trash day, and they pull them out.
On the driveway, there was no issue with the, uh, trash company?
For a year and a half, or actually, I've been there for two years, not even issue with any of the neighbors or the trash company. And, uh, the trash truck can go in and turn in the fire truck, turn around and leave easily, and picks up both sides.
Okay, and then how much was their homeowners association fee?
It was two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, okay, it's higher now. A bit over a hundred, okay.
No, it's two seventy-five. It take care of the landscaping.
We're making some improvements here.
It's got electric meter, and it's got a water meter for the irrigation. Everything's like smooth sailing, not an issue. Uh, the question about the colors being the same color outside, we have different finishes. We have some stucco, some stone, and some siding. So it's a, it's a, it's a nice mix for, for eight homes.
I, I think what Councilmember Coops was referring to was, um, the green, the green shade, right? The light green shade, it's kind of, it's all over the place, so.
It's a beautiful day. You choose that color and I'll paint it.
Well, I, I, I love green, by the way.
Exclude red.
Okay. Any question of the developer?
And by the way, the, all the building are solar-ready.
Yeah.
And in the garages, we run like a big enough flex and set plug because the plugs come with the car. If you use a Tesla, it's a different plug, Mercedes or whatever, so it's pre-set for, you don't have to damage any drywall or any paint. It's all ready to go.
Okay, very good. Any, any question? Go ahead, Councilmember Dunton.
Yeah, did, did you ever consider a gated community?
It could be, but a lot of times the fire department does not approve it mainly for the faster response in the community. They don't wanna be punching, uh, codes to open the gate. Actually, we would rather do a gated community, but on such a small street, it's doable, but fire department and police department don't like it much.
I, yeah, I, I differ that. I mean, yeah, they don't like it because they're lazy, but you know, you have a Knox box there, you get a key, you get a Knox box thing and whatever.
I wouldn't say lazy because sometimes they wanna, they need a, like a faster response, and every second counts.
Yeah. I just was asking. It doesn't mean to me one way or the other. I just thought it would be a more valuable project if it was a gated community.
Actually, it would be, like, it would, we'd get better pricing for it.
I would do that, and you know, the front house could be a side grass yard with a, with a nice fence there or whatever. I'm just, just asking you, it's, it's acquisitive is all.
No problem.
Doesn't mean me, me one way or the other, but I would just, you know, seeing what you thought.
Of course, the, we would rather like to deal with the, and make the police and fire department happy as possible.
Got it.
And help them as much as we can.
That was it, Mayor.
All right, okay, thank you. Councilmember Coops?
Yes, you might rough in power just in case the homeowners association ever wants to go with a gated community. You have the access to the power. Now's the time to do it, just in case.
Actually, it's done already, like in Downey.
Right.
The fire, they said no, but even though I have underground all the way to the block wall to the fence.
Right.
I ran two, um, empty PVC pipe for electrical.
Right, so you could even advertise as a potential to have a gated community if, if the majority would wanna do that.
They have like an issue with the tandem parking, how many cars can park in front of the gate to, to the street and all those sort of things. It ge, it gets in play, but we have no problem doing it.
What do you anticipate the sales price of these units will be?
I think in the nines.
Okay.
And the nine hundreds. It's about twenty-seven hundred square feet, twenty-two hundred square feet. It's gonna be like high ceilings, uh,
Ten-foot ceilings?
Yeah, high ceilings.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, tile roofing. The finishing's always like five-five drywall, five-eight drywall, no wavy, uh, beautiful corners. Um, we do it to a good taste, like tile flooring or the hardwood flooring. Ironwork would be nice. Uh, nice kitchens. We do either granite or quartzite, solid wood, kitchen cabinets, farmer sinks, and everything like them branded, from the faucet to the toilets to the shower, uh, doors, everything's nice.
All right, thank you.
Anytime.
All right, okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Just one question to staff. Can, can you bring back the, uh, conditions? The second one. Okay, so I was reading this, um, uh, the third, the third sentence. All labs, dens, slash offices are prohibited from being converted to bedrooms. How do we enforce that?
Don't.
Uh, include it in the CCNRs and, um, someone gets a complaint, we have code enforcement address it.
So who's gonna complain?
Neighbor.
If a child coming back from college want to go back home, there's no more space and.
Councilmember Sen, I'm sorry, Mayor Santinas, you are correct. So after the project gets finalized, um, really it's on a complaint basis, and it's locked in the C, CNRs as part of the homeowners association so that they know what their rules and requirements are.
Okay.
If somebody fails to meet that and the homeowners association fails to enforce it, then, um, oftentimes they'll contact the city, in which case they're in, um, non-compliance with their conditions of approval.
Hmm, okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, if I can just tag-team on that, if there's a subsequent conveyance and it's been illegally converted, and it's not disclosed on, during the conveyance, and the new homeowner takes over and discovers that, that's a problem for the previous homeowner as well. So it is a response-based condition unless we went in with a warrant and verify it every year. That's not gonna happen, but, but I have prosecuted those types of, of, of things, yes.
But something happened after it was?
There has to be a reactive type of thing, yes. But as you're aware, once we have a record, we can always point back to the record in subsequent code enforcement.
Yeah, okay, very good. Any other question of staff or the applicant? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
We will close the public hearing.
Before we do that, is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Oh, that's right. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay.
Good evening. Um, I actually, I'm a homeowner, homeowner directly across the street, ten-three-three-eight Maple Dell Street. So I just have some of the same few concerns that I've already been dress, addressed, such as the, the trash bins, for example. Are the new homeowners there prohibited from putting it on the street if they wanted to? Um, number two, parking. We have a, a permit parking situation there, so I've lived there for forty years. We didn't always have, uh, permit parking, but we have for the last, I don't know, fifteen years or so, and it's been great. You know, I never have a problem parking on my street. It's empty. Um, is there any threat to that changing, you know, with, with this new construction?
Interesting.
Yeah, because I've, I mean, I'm, I'm literally directly across the street, so I've grown up with just those two houses there and.
And you have permit parking on, on your, on your, in front of your house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and so, you know, going from maybe at, at, at once, you know, eight people across the street, four in each house, to maybe thirty now, you know, of course, that's the first thing I'm thinking is, is parking.
Do, do you know if this, the frontage of this house is included in the per, permit parking?
It is.
It is, okay.
But there's a fire, uh,
Fire hydrant?
Yeah, so I don't know if that, if that gets moved or what, what happens there.
Okay.
Um, but parking is probably my biggest concern, and I don't want that to ever be taken.
Okay.
And then my third question was just the timeline of when, I, I heard earlier that maybe start in about four months, but how long is it going to take? And what can I expect living across the street?
Hmm, okay. All right, in regards to your, to your, um, concern about permit parking, I don't think there's gonna be a significant change. As, as you heard from the applicant, uh, it's basically overparked. Uh, they have more parking than it's what's required by the city. It doesn't mean that it's gonna be always the case. But according to plans, they have more parking than what is required by the city.
How long, as I guess, the homeowners park in the garage as stated earlier?
Which is in the conditions.
If it's a requirement, yeah.
Yeah, it's a requirement, okay. And then we can ask the applicant later on how long it's gonna take for them to, uh, construct the, um, the units. Okay, what's your other question, your first question, ma'am?
Uh, city trash.
Oh, the trash.
Will they be prohibited if they choose to put it on the street?
No, they, they won't be able to.
Okay.
It's part of the, uh, it's, uh, CCNR. That's why the, um, they have to negotiate with the trash collection company for the trucks to go inside the units.
Mayor, if I may, I believe it's a condition, it's not a CCNR, it's a Bellflower condition that the trash cans cannot go on the street.
Is the condition or?
It was a condition.
A condition, okay.
It's a Bellflower condition, yeah. So it's, the city will not allow those to go on the street. We have more than just the homeowners. We allow that.
Okay, all right, so.
Maybe one more question before they, um, again, being the homeowner across the street, if I ever had any concerns or questions, who do I call, where do I go during, during the construction time?
I think you can talk to them first.
Get their business card.
Yeah, yeah. And then if you're not satisfied, then call the city manager.
Okay.
Yeah, but don't go, I, I don't, I wanna share, share a question with you while you're there and, and, and staff. Permit parking, so that was something that I didn't, didn't know, and permit parking, um, if the applicant doesn't know is because there was inundated with parking and it was, parking was rare and you, and it's a pay-to-play or pay-to-park privilege. So, those eight houses will be able to pay for parking a, a permit on that street, is that correct?
Correct. And it, and the reason I believe it's permit parking is because of the apartments to the north.
Right, right, yeah.
Uh, McNabb.
Correct.
So, you know how exp, how expensive it is to get those permits and it graduates up. So you, you know, people, some people don't pay, they don't wanna do it, and some will, so you will have, I'm sure, some cars that will come. But yeah, but there, I believe that there's room with, because you have the permit parking. It's, there's plenty of parking now. What do you mean?
It could go the other way if they do permit. It could go the other way if they do permit parking on the street, the, the new cause, the project there. Folks could park in front of those houses that have permit parking on the street, currently have permit parking on the streets. So I, I don't, I don't know if they'd even ask for the permit parking, you know?
No, yeah, they may not. They'll, well, they're gonna learn when, when they get that ticket. They might learn the hard way.
I'm not sure it would be an issue, but yeah, you never.
Yeah, you never know. It's, you know, it's, the person in the back's not gonna want to park on the street because that's a pretty good hike.
I mean, I guess that's another question.
Yeah.
Garage space, you know?
No, then you have to pay for that, you know, it's, yeah. They could, yeah, they could, but it's, yeah.
Now, I, maybe we have, you know, maybe ten people now parking right in front of that.
Well, no, 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 hold on. There, there, there's, there's a condition though, that they cannot use, the, the garages can be used only for parking.
Yeah, if they came in and asked for the permit, you would have the right to ask why. Yeah, yeah.
So, so the HOI will basically inspect that. I'm sure they do. They will.
So the average house could have at least two cars and that park in the driveway. Then you have that extra space technically out front. There's three cars and then you have three more college kids come. Yeah, they're gonna be buying permit car, permits. Because they're gonna be parking a long way away if not, but, yeah.
No, if they have five cars, it'll be okay. Because, because they have tandem, they have tandem parking already.
Yeah.
There's three cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway.
Mr. Mayor, just wanna add, uh, because of the type of construction.
Thank you.
The applicant or the construction will have a posted sign with the contact information of who to contact as well. No, I just want it for the public record.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think, ma'am, you know that there's gonna be, you, you can contact the developer during the construction period. And I said, if, if they don't respond, please contact the city manager. Okay, sir, can you come back? There was a question about the timeline for development.
Um, first of all, like my cell phone is, is posted on the sign, so everybody can read it.
Okay, good.
Can contact us with no problems, twenty four seven. Um, the second thing about the parking is like we have three in the garage, two in the front of the garage, five plus one, six, that's six. If somebody has seven cars, man, I hate to pay his insurance bill. If you can afford that, uh, that many registration and car insurances.
And, and you know about the permit parking?
Oh, I had no idea actually.
No, what, what it means is if somebody wants to park on the street, they have to pay for a permit.
More, more money for the city.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Your question about the, your question about the timeline for the construction?
Uh, we do like, uh, the city ordinance from, I guess, from seven to five or from eight to five.
No, I think you're asking how long is it gonna take to build, to build.
For the construction.
Once you get all the permits, how long will it take?
Like, you know, the, from the day we start to the finish, approximately ten months to a year.
Ten months to a year. Okay.
And we usually like, you know, the crews we deal with, we've been, uh, with the same crews for about thirty some years. They're all very respectful and haven't had no complaint from, by any of the neighbors. As a matter of fact, a lot of the neighbors that I build around, they come and recommend, like, you know, to hear it like these and recommend our company and our work.
Okay.
Thank God, we've been blessed.
All right. Very good. So let's test on about one year.
So.
All right. Anyone else? On this topic, ma'am, item nine A on the agenda. Okay. There being none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Made a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion by councilmember Coops, seconded by council, uh, member Sanchez to close the public hearing. Uh, without objection, that will be the order. All right. Well, I just wanna make a comment that I agree. It's a, it's a very good project. Uh, I think it's a, it's well designed. Uh, in terms of the utilization of space, um, I, I think you hit it right on the mark. Uh, what I like, one of the things I like in this, in this development is you're utilizing five hundred square feet uh, per unit, which is basically standard in the city. And as you know, the state, the federal government is, uh, requiring all the cities to, to provide more housing. And I think it's gonna be a good answer to that. And this will be added to our renet numbers, correct? From two units to, uh, six to eight units. So we're, we're adding a net of six units. So that will be a big help in terms of our requirement, uh, to provide more housing. So. Yeah. Well, we're getting, uh, Rome wasn't built in one day. So we're getting closer. Six will help. And, uh, I, I think overall the development, I applaud the, the architect and the developer in terms of designing this. It was well designed, uh, very, uh, very efficient. And I like those kind of open, open spaces. So anyway, that's my comment. Any final comments? Does a member Sanchez? Nope. Does a member Coops?
I think we're good.
We're good?
Don't.
Okay. All right.
How do you want this? In three motions or one or how's it?
I, I think one, one will do, right? One will do. So, does a member Coops? One will do.
All right. So would you like for me to read what Jeff read earlier? The whole, the whole?
No.
No.
Just move it, move the approval. I read it into the records.
All right.
It was read already.
So I'm moving approval for item one, which is the, uh, to approve a development review and tentative map and zone change at site design review. And item two, I'm approving the adopt resolution, resolution number twenty three oh three. A resolution approving development review case DR five dash twenty two dash one three zero six five. And, uh, we had a third one here.
Introduce.
Introduce, whatever.
Ordinance.
Wait for the reading.
Introduce ordinance number fourteen twenty thr, fourteen twenty three. Uh, an ordinance approving a zone change, ZC twenty two oh two from R one low density residential zone to R one PD low density residential plan development overlay district on property located at one oh three four three through one oh three five one Maple Dell Street, Bellflower, California.
I'll second that motion.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, does the motion include the amendments discussed with regard to the maintenance?
Right. Should we enumerate the, uh?
I believe it's lighting and landscaping.
Okay. Do, do we have the exact wardings for that?
Have you been?
Can you restate that, um, Ms. Ova or Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Just for the record.
Covenant conditions and restrictions and homeowners association are required for the project. The CCNRs must be in conformance with all requirements pursuant to the BMC and interest maintenance by all unit owners of all common areas on the property, including the driveway, perimeter walls, lighting, parking areas and landscaping.
That'll be part of my motion.
Yeah, okay. All right. Motion as amended. Okay.
As amended.
All right. Motion by councilmember Coops, seconded by councilmember Sanchez, um, to adopt resolution twenty three oh three and introduce ordinance fourteen twenty three as amended. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Sanchez?
Aye. All right. Congratulations, sir. And, uh, we expect it to break grounds very soon. All right. Next item, item eleven A.
Yeah, this is consideration possible action to adopt resolution number two, two three dash zero five, resolution to adjust the meeting stipends for various city commissions and superseding resolution number nine nine dash nine eight. And to discuss provide direction regarding the manner in which members of the city council appoint members of the planning, parks, recreation and public safety commissions. What this is, is two ministerial requests by two different council members. Uh, the mayor is requesting that we review the manner in which we appoint commissioners from each commission. Uh, over the years, the custom has been when the city was electing out large council members that each council member would nominate a commissioner from anywhere in the city and that would be either approved or not approved by the city council at, at the reorganization period like we did this time. Subsequent to that, though, however, there's been, the city has changed over to full district elections. Every district now has voted and, uh, the mayor has requested that the council either one, uh, make the decision to keep the appointing process the same as it is now currently, which means that any council member can point from at large in the community or two, to think about maybe, uh, requiring an appointment of each commissioner at each commission from each council member from within their own districts. Um, it's purely a policy call and it's a ministerial item. The second item comes from councilmember Dutton and in regard to stipends paid to the, to the commissioners in each commission. We provided a survey which is included in the staff report and staff is recommending that we, uh, the, uh, the amount of the stipend for each commissioner at each commission by a amount of fifty dollars per month. And if there's any questions you have, we're happy to answer it.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the introduction, Mr. Stewart. And let me just give you some background. Um, it's been a while since we, um, signed this, um, the agreement with Maldeff when we were, uh, when we were sued to, to create districts in Bellflower. And I think that was way back in two thousand eighteen. And, um, this was brought up during the discussion. I think, um, uh, councilmember Larson was still in the council back then. And, uh, we didn't have much time to discuss this topic back then because there are other issues that, um, that were in front of us, especially the district, the districting of the city. So we let it go at that point. And, um, since then, we already have, by the way, already had three election cycles. Eighteen, eighteen, twenty and twenty two.
This was the final individual district to ring in though.
Right, exactly. And then, uh, last year, someone, um, someone asked me the question about appointing, um, uh, commissioners by district and it was not appropriate for me to bring to the council because it was not during an election cycle. So in terms of timing, I thought this would be an appropriate time to, to talk about it since we have the experience now of the three election cycle by district. And, uh, and also in addition to that, this has shared with me that, um, councilmember Danton wants to talk about the stipend for the, um, uh, commissioner. So I think this will be the appropriate time to talk about it, uh, in terms of which way do we, we're gonna go in the future. I for one, um, just for the record, my commissioners, it's kind of a mixed bag. I have two commissioners in my own district and one commissioner out of my district. So just, just, just for information. So I just want to have an open discussion about this since we have not, have never discussed this topic since the lawsuit.
And how do you feel about the increase of the stipend?
Uh, I think, um, based on the, based on the survey, I think, um, I think it's appropriate to increase the stipend at this point. You know, I think we'll be right in the middle. If you look at, um, um, not Lakewood, don't look at Lakewood. Look at Long Beach. Uh, Long Beach is two hundred dollars per meeting. And then, um, the other one that's close to us will be, um, Paramount, two hundred fifty per month. So, and I think the recommendation from staff is fifty dollars increase. So for planning commission, it will be uh, from one hundred to one fifty. And then for the public safety and parks and recreation commission will be from fifty to a hundred dollars. So I think it's still within the range of our neighboring cities.
Now, the city manager said per month. We really mean per meeting, correct?
Yeah, per meeting. Yeah. It's one fifty per meeting for planning commission.
Cause there's some meetings, they, months, they have no meeting.
Right. Mm-hmm. All right. Anyway, so that's, I just want to kind of start talking about this.
So let's just, we'll just get the stipend portion. That's a little easier one out of the way.
Let's do the easy one first.
Yeah, I put this in, since my name's on it, I put this, you know, asked, you know, you know, I'm still mayor to see if we can do some research on this. Something I want to do. And I didn't know how long it's been, but in the staff report, it talks about the last stipend, uh, raise was year two thousand. So I think twenty two years gone by and we need to keep up with the economics and, and, uh, so that's why I brought this, to make more fair. And we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, but we're in the middle. Um, according to the survey, and I for one would, uh, um, like to see the, the stipends adjusted. And, uh, and I also got a mixed, mixed bag, Sonny, of commissioners. I have one in my district and two outside my district.
Hmm, okay.
Other than that. But I think we ought to, let's get the stipend thing out of the way and then we'll come back a little more difficult.
I know that, uh, I'm sure that you're in favor of increasingly stipend.
You think? I'm the autographer.
Yeah, I know. All right. Does a member Coops?
I believe that we should increase the stipend as proposed.
As proposed. Does a member San, Sanchez?
I believe that we should increase the stipend. Um, my thought was more of a one fifty, one hundred and seventy five. But, um, I can go with proposed as well.
One fifty?
One fifty. So for planning commission, one fifty, public safety for one hundred and then parks and recreation for seventy five. But.
Oh, instead of?
Instead of one hundred.
Instead of one fifty, one hundred and one hundred.
Right. The only reason being is I was on that commission and sometimes those meetings are only ten minutes.
Yeah, but time is, time is time. You gotta drive and.
No, I, I'm not gonna die on it. I'm just, that was my, that's what the numbers I wrote on here. So, uh, I'm in favor of the increase. And my, my, the proposed increase would work.
Uh, okay.
If that, but I just wanted to throw you, throw that out there.
All right. So we got that figured out.
Okay.
Should, should we hear from the parks and recreation director?
No.
Can we take action now today, tonight, tonight?
I'll take action and, and make a motion that we, uh, recommend, uh, um, move staff's report for the increase in stipends.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by councilmember Danton, seconded by councilmember Coops, um, to move the recommendation from staff regarding the stipend. Roll call, please.
Um, just for clarification, Mayor, that is, uh, resolution twenty three zero five, correct?
Oh, there's.
Oh, I didn't know it was a resolution here.
There's a resolution. You guys are well ready. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, there you go.
Yep.
Twenty three oh five.
That's what you meant, Ray, huh?
Yeah, that's what.
That's what I meant, exactly. Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. Um, councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
And that would be, uh, aye for adopting resolution twenty three oh five.
Thank you. Mayor Sanchez?
Aye. Okay, motion carried. All right. On the second topic. I'd like to hear from you. Oh, well, councilmember Coops, sir.
All right. You wanna go?
Go ahead. Wants to go first.
I believe that we should leave the choices that we now have made, keep it the same so that we can draw from the entire city and not be restricted to our own districts. I think there are good people throughout the city and, uh, they may live in the same district and we, you know, it's all about what we do here is making the city the best we can. And so I like the chance to have more choices than have been restricted to just my district. Cause there could be somebody really valuable in a different area and I can't utilize their abilities. And so I would be of the opinion to keep our choices at large and not restrict them to districts on all commissions.
If I may ask you, what is the composition of your appointees? Are they within your district?
One of them is and two of them are not. So my Larry Wehage.
So it's a mixed bag.
My public, uh, what am I looking for?
Public works?
Public, no.
Public safety.
Public safety, Larry is in my district.
Uh.
Whereas my public, uh, parks is not and my planning commissioner is not.
Okay. All right. All right. Very good.
So I just laid it all on the table right there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what we're doing now. Because again, we haven't had the discussion since two thousand eighteen.
Well, you might go two to two because Mr. Amato's not here. You never know. Yeah.
Does a member Sanchez?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I, I too feel that same, uh, uh, thought process. I think that it's valuable to have commissioners outside of or anywhere throughout the city for two, a couple of reasons. One, it brings a different perspective because they don't live necessarily in the same neighborhood. Uh, that's one. And, and two, um, it, it really, I feel like in, in the future, uh, down, down the road, uh, when hopefully it doesn't happen, but if the council or, you know, isn't as, uh, you know, collaborative, it could bring division and that's my fear.
I hope not.
In the future. Well, I think that once you start becoming centered and focused on one district, like district mindset, you're kind of grooming that district my idea versus one district versus another. That's what I'm coming to believe in, in this conversation. Um, that I feel that it would cause that. Just, I'm not a minor, I mean, I'm not a future teller, but that's my, my, uh, reasoning for leaving it as is. Just the idea that, um, when all my representatives, um, are outside of my district, I believe, I actually don't even know where one of them is and that's, it might be district one or district two. I'm not sure, but, uh.
Well, it's kind of important to know.
It's Brian Amato.
Who's that? Who's that?
Brian, uh, Amato, Brian Amato, he goes, he's appointed, newly appointed to the parks and recreation.
He lives in district one.
He's in, he's in borderline district one, district two. Okay, there you go.
I know. Um, Brian, right? Brian?
Right. And then right now I'm out of a planning commissioner. Uh, and I had two applicants apply and they both live in district five. One is, uh, so those are my applicants that.
So you don't have anyone in your district?
No, I do not at this point in time. Yeah. Just being transparent.
Right. Okay. Well, we're all transparent here. All right.
I can, I can piggyback on some. I can, I can piggyback on some of that.
Okay, go ahead.
It's, yeah, cause I only wanted to, I just shared my mixed bag, as I have one in my district and two not. My concern as it could be is, I think what you were struggling with, Victor, was, was talent. And I always use the talent word. You get to draw talent from citywide. And I can, I can, you have a better chance to find quality applicants doing that. But I do see if you had to draw in the district, we're gonna be talking and collaborating with each other, hey, you know? And Dan and I coined a phrase a while ago, horse trading commissioners at one point.
We could have never done that.
And I could see that happening again if we, if we had to, um, get commissioners within our district and say, you know, hey colleague, who do you know, you know anybody around here that'd be good for my, uh, Parks and Rec Commissioner or whatever? Then we'd have to collaborate on that and then we would be drawn from, we would be discussing with other colleagues to try to fill our seats. That's what I could see happening.
Yeah, I, I, I can see that. So as I said earlier, I'm, uh, my appointments are kind of a mixed bag. But you raised a good point though, because, um, I don't want to see that, um, we're locked into a district in terms of appointment. But at the same time, there, I think there's a gap here because there's no one in your district in any, in any commission. So would there be an issue with the residents of district four saying, okay, other than the council member, there's no one else in our district? So is it, I'm just saying the flip side, is the flip side now?
Right, absolutely. And I think I would.
I think we need to think about that.
Absolutely, and I think.
In terms of representation.
Fair, um, and I would say, you know, just Thursday I met with, uh, what I thought was gonna be one resident, ended up being about five residents. I take the meetings, uh, in, in, anywhere in the district, district four or across the city, and I share the information with my colleagues when it's, uh, on a different district. But, uh, I, as of right now, the op, I've had two, uh, opportunities to appoint. And I put it out there for people that throughout the city that have shown interest. Some were in my district, some weren't, uh, only, and in both processes, those that weren't in my district were the only ones that submitted the application. So I, I have thrown it out there, um, at the end of the day, it just hasn't happened.
Hmm, okay. Mayor Protem Hamada is not here, so I was wondering if it's gonna be okay for you to?
I was gonna say.
If we postpone this discussion until the next meeting so we can hear from, because I think this is, this is really important discussion.
I was just curious of, of council member Hamada's, if his commissioners were they, what districts they were in.
Well, knowing his commissioner, they're all in district one, I think.
I, I do have that information. Um, his planning commissioner is Aaron Drake in district one. Public safety commissioner Larry Myers is in district three.
Oh, district three.
And Parks and Recreation Commissioner Michelle Worley is in district one.
There's a mixed bag also. Okay.
You know, one of the things I was concerned about when we went to districts was that there, we would have some infighting about finances. You know, so you got, for instance, more curb and gutter repair than I did and I needed it worse. Or you got more tree trimming than I did. You know, we would always be looking at how much is being spent in each district. But luckily that has never occurred. We never look over each other's shoulder to say, where was the finances spent? He got more than what I got in mind. But I think by having district, it, it's working. But the unifier is allowing us to choose personnel and commissioners from throughout the community. We're not isolating ourselves, like you said. And, uh, we might even consider, and I'm not a big proponent of this, that of your three, one needs to be from your district. So that you would still have some ownership of that. And so.
And that's why, that's, and there's representation.
You'd have some representation, but out of the three that you are able to appoint, one of them, no matter what the position, needs to come from your position.
So all districts are represented.
Exactly. And that's something that we can kick around.
Yeah, we can kick around, okay.
And it's nothing, I don't think we have, I'd like to have, uh, Mayor Protem Hamada's input on this.
Yeah.
Uh, but, cause it's pretty important.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's really important.
But that's just my viewpoint.
Yeah, that's another.
And I completely agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting concept, okay. All right, um, you've heard our discussion here, is it, is there anyone who would like to share their input on this matter?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, my name is Chrissy Vidia Brokey and I'm here tonight, um, for two reasons. One, I do have an application pending, um, for the planning commission because you do have a vacancy. And so I would hate to see the, I, I understand the, the need for this type of conversation. The timing is unfortunate because you do have a current vacancy right now on a very important commission. I'll, I'll speak to the, the broader conversation as a whole, the, the points that, um, that council member Coops brought up about having access to the city at large, I think is important because there's different skillsets that are needed for these different, uh, commissions. For planning commission, it's helpful to have somebody who understands zoning or understands real estate or understands those types of things, right? Those are specific skillsets, but maybe with a parks and rec, a background in understanding youth sports or things like that. So I think because they have very specific skillsets that you do want for those, further like defining them that it has to be within one district could actually prohibit you guys from having the best candidates for that. Um, I'm also here just advocating because I, I am very interested in the vacancy of the position. I am a, a urban planning geek. Bellflower planning zoning has been a big part of me. I used to go and sit in planning commission meetings, this is before kids and before marriage, just for fun. Because it was so fascinating to me how the zoning could actually impact people's lives. And the fact that they're not always black and white issues and you have to have common sense, that inspired me to go to grad school. I went to Boston University and I graduated top of my class. I won the award of excellence for the city planning department and that was ten years ago. So not just having the book smarts, I actually have been able to see this in action in the city. And this is something that's very passionate, uh, I'm very passionate about. So I would hate to see you guys miss out on an applicant like me because of a shift like this or withhold somebody like me coming into a position because of the conversation that you're having. So I, I would hope that you guys would, uh, consider just leaving it as is. Or, um, I, I guess I also have questions, like would this be retroactive? Like would you be resetting your whole, all your commissions and this impacts everybody else? Or does this only impact the current applications, which is me and one other person? I really feel like you guys could benefit from a young female perspective on the planning commission. Um, so just don't, keep that in mind. I'm here to answer any questions.
Well, as you can hear from our discussion, there, there's the, our minds are not set.
Yeah.
On this, so it's an open discussion. And I think we will, as my recommendation earlier, we'll continue the discussion because we would like to hear the input from Mayor Protem Hamada also, I think it's very important. Thank, thank you for your testimony. Anyone else? Okay, all right, are you in agreement with, um, continuing this for the next meeting?
So you just, you wanna, is that the direction, continue the next meeting? Okay.
Yeah, I think that, I'd like to have the input of Mr. Hamada.
Yeah, that's fair, well, absolutely, that makes sense.
So we need the motion to continue this item until the next meeting? Or we need to make action? Okay, okay, all right.
No action.
All right, no action at this time? All right, uh, the rest of consent calendars, anyone else would like to pull an item? Oh, recusal first, recusal.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse on item K because I have property near the project at Sims Park.
Okay. Anyone else, any recusals? Anyone else would like to pull an item from the agenda? No?
Move the consent calendar.
Okay.
Before you have a chance not to.
Second.
Well, no, hold on, hold on.
Sonny wants to pull about six items.
I gotta move in the second right over here.
Well, I didn't call for the vote though. Right? According to Robert's rule, we can, we can discuss. No, no, I just want to pull the item twelve L because at the last meeting, I promised that I will give a report.
Oh, from Sacramento? Oh, I'm dying to hear that.
There you go, okay. I just want to share with you that we have a very productive, uh, trip to Sacramento. My, um, council member Sanchez, Mayor Protem Hamada, myself went to Sacramento. And, uh, it, it was a phenomenal meeting. It was, uh, sponsored by the California Contract Cities Association. And, uh, the main topics of the meeting, the discussion was on the, um, public safety and housing. And you, you will hear this, um, throughout the year, housing and public safety, those are two top, top, topics. And, uh, we had a very informative, very good, uh, presenters. And, uh, we, I, I, I got a lot of information. But more importantly, we met with our, uh, representatives. Uh, we met with the speaker, Speaker Randon, who is now our assembly person for our district. Uh, we met with, um, uh, State Senator Bob Archuleta. And we also met with, um, Assembly Member, uh, Blanca Pacheco, who is not representing our district, but is a friend of the city. And, um, I was very impressed with what they have done so far. And, um, one of the things that we're working on, working on is the revision of the penal code. And I was kind of surprised in terms of what they've done so far. We gave them the draft, last, to give you a brief background, last year, uh, we made the proposed amendment to them. And, um, they came back to me saying, well, you're too late to submit this amendment. The, the timing for a receipt of this, uh, amendments is closed. Okay, fine. So I put on my calendar to make sure that this year, I mean, twenty twenty-two, in my calendar, so sometime in July, I'm gonna call them. So in July of twenty twenty-two, I reached out to the office of, uh, Senator Archuleta. And, um, I submitted the proposed amendment to the penal code. And, um, I waited for about a couple of months, uh, after that, not, I have nothing. And I called him back, I said, oh, uh, the district rep is, um, is on, is on, uh, medical leave. So now, so I panicked, uh, it's getting close again to the deadline. So I reached out directly to Senator Archuleta, I texted him and he called me back and he said, send it to me directly. So I sent the proposed amendment to him and I did that. And then surprisingly, when we visited Sacramento, they were ready with the proposed language of the amendment. So that's how far have they gone. So I was very impressed. And I think, um, uh, the trip was worth it. And, um, and I, I think that, um, uh, there was a significant benefit to the city in terms of reaching out to our representatives, uh, meeting them face to face, um, uh, especially meeting with, um, uh, Speaker Randon, he's got, he's the speaker. He's got a huge office, okay, huge office and a lot of staff. And by the time we get there, there's about ten people that stood up when we got in. And then we met in his office and he's got about six of his staff helping him, uh, respond to our questions. So that's how important they feel we are to his district because, um, because of this redistricting, we are a new addition to his district. So I'm really glad that, um, he's taking the time to learn about the city, to know about us. And it's gonna be very valuable, uh, if everything, um, if everything goes well, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, unfortunately, he's, I think he's gonna step down as speaker, uh, sometime in June. Uh, it will help us significantly because the way you say it is, right now as speaker, he cannot, normally speaking, he cannot carry a bill by himself, being the speaker. Uh, so, but come June, come July first, he can carry a bill on our behalf. So I think that's gonna be important because he's, as a former speaker at that, by, by then, uh, he still have a lot of clout. So with that, uh, that's my report on, um, item twelve L that I pulled, uh, council member Coops.
Riveting.
All right. Now, with your mo- motion by council member Coops, seconded by council member Sanchez to approve the consent calendar, uh, roll call, please.
Council member Coops?
Aye.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Council member Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, council reports. Let me start with, um, council member Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to just start off by, um, uh, saying, uh, you know, that my thoughts and prayers are with a very, um, sad, sad, uh, sad day and sad weekend for many of us. Some of us have families in that area and thankfully, family members are safe. And, um, uh, you know, I just wanna say what a tragedy that was, um, and still try to say happy lunar new year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Sanchez, council member Dutton?
I'd like to thank all my colleagues and I'm saddened by Ray Hamada being under the weather, not being able to, uh, be at the outgoing mayor ceremony. And, and again, thank you and I appreciate, uh, uh, working with you and, and, uh, all your kind comments and whatnot. And, and, uh, just thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, council member Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we gotta keep, uh, Mayor Protem Hamada in our prayers, he doesn't miss anything, so he must really not feel well. I mean, uh, if, if there's a meeting, he's there and he's early and he stays to the end. He's very, very attentive to all the things we do here in city council. So we gotta remember him in our prayers. I, uh, seem to always have the ominous job of reporting passings of people. And tonight is no exception. Uh, my good, longtime friend and neighbor, past mayor of the city of Bellflower, Clyde Wilson, passed away this past weekend. And, uh, I knew, first met Clyde when I was sixteen years old. And that was, uh, nineteen sixty-seven. And I've known him continuously since then. Twenty-three years ago, he and I built homes in the same area across the street, much, much right from each other and got to really know each other well. Clyde was a person you'll never forget. He had a way about him, lots of confidence, lots of humor. Always willing to teach what he knew about real estate. And it was real. It wasn't just, it was things he had experienced. He would conduct seminars on real estate investments and calculations and things that could improve your net worth just by following some simple steps that he had developed himself. He'd conduct seminars throughout the nation, at least a half a dozen of them every year. And have other speakers that were just as well and renowned as he was, speak about real estate. Six, seven hundred people would show up at these things. And they'd all pay seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars to listen to Clyde and his colleagues talk about real estate. Clyde thrived on that in his later years when he didn't do as much active trading, but he became a, a teacher. If you get a chance, go to YouTube, put in Clyde Wilson and scroll down, cause there's a few other Clyde Wilsons, believe it or not. And you'll come across his life story. From the time he came to Bellflower, or let's start at the beginning, he was born in Florida, nineteen thirty-three, moved to Bellflower with the Marines after being in Camp Pendleton, met his wife Anita here, they married, had their children and so Clyde is survived by Bob, who's with us tonight, and his wife Gina, his children Sophia and Natalie and Jackson. And Clyde has a daughter Susan in Florida. And she has two children by the name of Lauren and a son by the name of Fisher. And so it's important that we notice people like Clyde who made a difference in our community. Uh, the council has ordered the staffs, uh, to our flags throughout the city be put at half staff. And you'll see it that way probably for the next week. At this time, uh, no services are planned. But, uh, I just wanted the community to know that to lose a good friend and giant like Clyde Wilson, it just takes a little piece of your heart. He lived a good life, he had no regrets. And, uh, he was slowing down and I made it a point to go to his last seminar in Las Vegas this past fall. And he was like a rock star. He sat there and people would buy his book and he would sign the book and they would take pictures with him. It, it was quite a deal and he just thr- thrived on it. But, uh, he made a big impact in my life, all of it positive. We've all had negative impacts in our life on different projects or whatever. And Clyde would speak of those and you could learn from what he said. Don't do this, always do that. Uh, but he is a true good resource for life in general, for real estate transactions, for loaning money, for borrowing money, for evaluating tenants. He had that down to a science. And so I'd like to, uh, adjourn our evening, our city council meeting tonight in, uh, memory of past mayor Clyde Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Coops, um, uh, well said. But if I can just piggyback on your note, on a personal note. Thank you, council member Coops. Um, uh, well said, but if I can just piggyback on your note, on a personal note, um, I was also a, uh, of the informal student of Clyde. Uh, he, um, he gave me a tour of the city once in a while. One of our favorite stops was the, the Flans Car Wash at the end of the, uh, end of the tour. He would have this car wash at Flans. And, um, one thing that I learned from, from Clyde was, he said, don't pay more than forty bucks per square foot on dirt. That was his magic number, forty dollars per square foot. And I, and he gave me, Bob, I will remember this, I still have the, his, his famous calculator. He gave me one of his calculators that I use for real estate, and, uh, that's something that I will treasure. Um, on the, on the second note, um, tonight, um, if you missed the outgoing mayor ceremony, uh, we honored, um, former mayor Ray Dutton. It was a, a wonderful event. Uh, I want to thank city staff, especially Parks and Recreation Department, for a job well done. It was, um, uh, it was well organized, uh, starting from the video, um, the gifts, the decorations, the setup of the, uh, the green room, it was as usual, it was well done. So I cannot help but, um, thank you staff for doing this marvelous job. So with that, uh, we will, there's no closed session for today at all. Uh, so with that, we'll adjourn this, uh, city council me- meeting in memory of former mayor and council member Clyde Wilson to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.